It is seven o'clock PM. This is a meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen. We're meeting in the Selectmen's office at the town hall and I call the meeting to order. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a couple of items. Our town manager is not here. We, he had an appointment that was originally scheduled for Monday that was canceled, postponed till tonight. So he conferred with myself and the vice chair and we said, given the, the items on the agenda, we were gonna plow forward without him. We are gonna be joined by Paul Durensis, Town Council, in a few minutes as per his usual first Tuesday of the month, visit to our meeting. So the first thing is, if there's anybody in the audience that's here for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. If somebody does show up in the next little bit for public comment, I will certainly allow them to make their comments. Turning to, oh, one other thing on the agenda. Because we were scheduled to go into executive session at the end of this meeting, we are not gonna do that. That's, those are discussions that we would typically have with the town manager and since he's not here, we'll probably do that next week. Our meeting on Tuesday the tenth. So I'm gonna turn to selectman update. Martha?
Well, first, uh, both, uh, oh, his?
Yeah, Town Council just arrived. Paul, when you get settled, would you like to come up and join us?
Okay.
Why not? The chair is empty.
Both Diane and I were at the MMA conference, unfortunately. Kevin couldn't because he was not well, but I found it was a very good conference and Diane went to most everything we went to. We heard governor, Lieutenant Governor, mayor, Senator, and many other speakers. One of the speakers that Diane couldn't say for was, was, uh, the, uh, I'm gonna read his, his, um, his, um, his, his. He's a historian and journalist, Michael Beschloss. You might have seen him on Channel Two doing historians. He's a graduate of Williams and had his two sons there. And he spoke for about thirty-five minutes without a note on the different history, the different presidents that he had written books on. And that was a nice finish to the conference. We had, we had all kinds of, of, um, meetings that we went to. Diana and I went on on the opiate and law and it was just a very good conference. I don't wanna go into too much detail and you can do more.
I'll just, just a little bit of, add to that. The, we talk about speaking without notes. The, the mayor of Austin did speak without notes. The governor spoke without notes.
Lieutenant Governor.
Lieutenant Governor at lunch and, um, and.
Elizabeth Warren.
Elizabeth Warren, all came in without, without notes and were just really compelling and, and, you know, Paul can probably identify whether they were just playing to the crowd, but they were saying all the right things in terms of the importance of, you know, tax dollars going into the communities and, you know, having some local control, local decision making, even from the Senator, talking how important it is to reach out. And then, of course, she visited Marshfield and Situate the other day, as did most of our congressional and state leaders. But it was a great conference. It always is and it's, it's nice to have the governor be very focused on the communities and.
Yeah, and giving us money right away.
Right, and claiming hopefully that he won't, there'll be no unfunded mandates, so we'll see how that works.
Elizabeth Warren also mentioned that, so on the federal level. One person I wanted to see, 'cause I knew who was coming, was Brian Noble, who had the camera shop. He is now a town administrator in Norfield. And I talked to him before he left here and he, and he just wanted to have another career. The Korean cameras is sort of gone by the wayside. And he's moved his entire family out there from Norwell. And then I, I wanna mention, I also wanna commend the DPW and all the excellent work they've done tirelessly for the roads, which has not been easy. And they really have done a terrific thing. And then there's a program in our neighboring town, Hingham, Saturday, it's Lincoln Day. And this is the ancestor of Abraham Lincoln go up here and they have a program at eleven thirty at the old Sherpa Church. We've done something about that if anybody cares to go there. So that's all. Thank you.
Karen?
No, other than to join Martha in thanking our DPW workers and also the public safety officers, especially the rank and file, for all the hard work that they put in in keeping our community safe over the past week.
Tracy?
Just a note to the public in general, the road crews, it's worth noting that they, this last storm, they performed their duties and have continued to perform their duties down two pieces of equipment. So while I've heard a number of inquiries about the speed with which things were cleared up and the like, I'd have to point out that it's hard to do when you're, when you're, when you're missing pieces of equipment that are supposed to be out on the road. Likewise, we can each make it, make life easier on ourselves by making life easier on our road crews by simply pulling your car off the road and staying off the road while people are, while these guys are out plowing. It is very, very difficult, at best when it's snowing, it has been snowing as hard as we've seen it, to maneuver a multi-ton truck on our relatively narrow roads. So appreciate your cooperation and I know they would appreciate your cooperation. Likewise, it appears that this, you know, the weather stretch that we're in probably continues for some period of time and it reminds me of a, a very simple point. The definition of your neighbor is someone you give a hoot about. So if you've got someone in your neighborhood or that you know of in town who may not have the capability to simply get out at will, whether it's because they can't shovel themselves out, maybe they're a little bit older or someone, simply make the phone call. If you're going to the store, ask them, can you help out? Can you pick something up? If there's a shoveling crew or kids running around in your neighborhood, direct them to that house. It's what makes the community work and I'm sure that the people on receiving end would appreciate it. That's it.
Kevin?
Last Thursday, Chris hosted a, one of the series of fiscal meetings that he's been hosting in conjunction with other town officials about the financial, the budget, the financial items coming up and so forth. The theme on this one last Thursday was five-year fiscal forecasting. I would, and we're gonna, he's gonna be having, we're gonna be having others of these in, in the months and on an ongoing basis. But I would encourage citizens to be, to go to those, those meetings. They're, they're great, interesting dialogues. There are people from the advisory, from school committee, select people were there, concerned citizens and so forth. It's a very interesting conversation, great way to become on a casual basis informed as to budgetary issues in town. And also to get to know some of the other people in town that are active and interested in these issues. I think that does nothing but provide information and enhance communication. So it was a great meeting and when we have these meetings coming up in the future, I hope a lot of people attend because I think you find it very worthwhile and fun too.
Is that it?
Yes.
Just on that, Tracy, do you know whether the materials that were handed out at that meeting are up on the website?
I don't know, but I can make sure.
We have it in our packets, but I think Chris mentioned that he would get those on the website.
I think they are.
Okay, thank you. So I have a, a few things. One, of course, is to just piggyback on my colleagues who have thanked our public safety DPW and the emergency management team headed up by Glenn Pratt and Fred Coed for really just tireless work around the clock. And then, you know, you take a breather and you're back at it again with these, the walloping we've been getting. So, you know, tremendous thanks. And, and also on something that we can all do is shovel out a hydrant. I, I started fixating on a couple of hydrants and now I go around town looking and seeing if, you know, most of the hydrants in Cohasset have kind of a tall flag on it, you know, can identify it. But there was a house that was actually lost in Walpole because the, it was during the first storm and the fire, by the time the firefighters were able to hook up to the, to the hydrant, the, the, the structure had started to really get devastatingly on its way. So that's something every one of us can do is just, you know, if you see a hydrant in your neighborhood or pass the word along and everybody should adopt a hydrant. I'm hoping that we won't have to thank the DPW and public safety crew anymore and we'll start seeing balmy sunny days, but.
Very gloomy.
It's a gloomy, gloomy forecast. So, and I, I also wanna ask for a moment of silence. We, we've actually lost a couple of, of citizens and the mother of Paula Lenaris, who's our town treasurer, passed away the other day. Muriel Sylvia, who has lived in town for much of her adult life and is the mom of our fire chief. And also for our town historian and another person who traces his roots in Cohasset back, I think, many generations, David Wadsworth. So if we could just take a moment of silence. Thank you. We have a posted public hearing tonight that's continued from our last meeting. I'm gonna read the hearing notice. Oh, sorry, I have one more thing I'd like to add, which is that tomorrow night is the Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition, which is an opiate task force, if you will. They're having a very substantial program tomorrow evening, Wednesday, February fourth, from seven to nine PM in the Cohasset Middle High School auditorium. Many speakers. It's, it's geared primarily to parents and to other community members. I, I don't think it's targeted to students. I hope I'm right about that, but I encourage everybody to attend. I've actually had calls from people in other towns that are anxious to come and, and start their own conversations and I think this is a great way to begin those in, in the other communities. And I'm sorry, does anybody have a hearing notice? Here, I think I got it. I'm sorry. I'm gonna read the public hearing notice. The Cohasset Board of Selectmen, acting as a liquor licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, at seven ten PM, which has been continued to this evening, Tuesday, February third, two thousand and fifteen, in the Selectmen's office, Town Hall, forty-one Highland Ave, to consider the application of Sajan Enterprises LLC DBA Cohasset Wine and Spirits for change of location from twenty-seven to twenty-nine South Main Street to eight oh seven Chief Justice Cushing Highway. The manager is Deborah Sajan. The license premises is approximately nine hundred and sixty square feet consisting of one room. The public is invited to offer input on the proposed in writing in advance of the public hearing or in person at the hearing. Is there a motion to, um, do I have to reopen the hearing? It's been continued?
It'll be safe.
Some boards do some times, the chair just does. It's, it's a local practice.
I'll, I'll just call it, call it, we're back at it. In the meantime, we've received from the applicant a letter requesting a continuance. So I'm gonna read the letter and then I, we have to invite the applicant up. This is a letter to the town of Cohasset. Dear Selectmen, as a result of meetings between Mr. Sajan and the building inspector, Robert Egan, and a review of the proposed relocation, Sajan Enterprises LLC requests that the board defer any action on their request for a transfer, on their request for a transfer for a period of sixty to ninety days in order that Sajan can reexamine the proposed site to obtain all necessary permits from the town boards as well as a site plan to meet all requirements of the town or consider other options for relocation for the license. Sajan Enterprises LLC appreciates the courtesy extended to them and hopes that the continuance will lead to a successful transfer. Thank you for your consideration and it's signed by their, their counsel, Robert E. Galvin. Having said that, we will ask for a vote to continue the hearing, but I would like, if the applicants would like to speak, you're welcome to come up here. Since you came out in the, the cold weather and if, if anybody is here to speak about this matter from the public, just for the record, we will allow you to, to speak, although we won't be doing any deliberations, united with the discussion to continue. Could you identify yourself, name and address for the record?
My name is Juwendah Sajan. That's my wife's address.
Deborah, hi, thank you very much. And you're?
I live in Marshfield, forty-seven Old Colonial Lane.
Forty-seven Old Colonial Lane, thank you. You may sit down. And so you're, you're asking the board to continue this hearing to a date certain?
Yes.
For sixty to ninety days so you can do whatever due diligence you need to do?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board have any questions, just specific to the continuance?
My only question is whether or not we, we need to, would it be a continuation of this hearing or should it be closed or reopened?
He's asking for a continuance.
Yeah.
The motion before you is to continue it, but you're suggesting, yes, to deny it.
It says defer any action.
You've already had one session of the hearing?
Yes.
So if you don't continue it, that motion is denied and you've gotta go forward, I see.
Reposting, okay.
Okay, thank you. I, as I understand, because I was not here at the initial hearing, in essence, there's, there are questions raised by the, by the building inspector with respect to suitability of the law. Are there other questions raised by the public?
Yeah.
Is there something else I'm missing?
Nope, I think that's it. Do you think that summarizes your position?
Yes.
Okay.
The other issue too that came up was we were concerned about what our role was in doing that, which I think has been somewhat clarified between now, but that was another big issue when we weren't here.
Right.
You know, we seemed to wanna make sure we knew whether it should be a limited perspective or we should consider broader issues and so on.
I'd like to ask Council, isn't there only concern the license?
Basically, yes. I'm with me.
So what we'll do is.
Do you need a motion?
I do. I, I just wanna discuss with the applicant as well as the board whether you prefer sixty days or ninety days. Do you think ninety days would give you more?
Ninety days would be.
Would be preferable, okay. If I could ask the board to just look at our calendars, which, um, we're at February third, March third.
I'll try to do my level best as fast as we can fulfill their requirements if it's four.
Okay. Well, I think what we'll do is we will set a date certain because we're gonna have to, you know, make sure everybody knows and butters and that'll give you some time.
Instead of that, you can put seventy-five days, whatever is suitable for you.
Okay, thank you.
Would that be April?
Ninety would be, ninety days would be.
May would be May fifth.
May fifth.
How does, how does that look for people?
Well, if he has a solution, can he, can he come and?
It'll still be two feet of snow.
Let's do that, yeah, I think what Martha, Martha's question is, right, if there's still snow, there's still two feet of snow in May.
We're trying to get it beyond the snow, yes.
Martha's question is, if we set a date today to continue the hearing to May fifth and the applicant comes to us because he's resolved his issues and wants to come before the board sooner than that.
You have to repost the whole thing.
We have to repost, we have to close and reopen.
You can go beyond, but you can't.
Got it.
Short it up.
Okay.
Okay.
If that's a concern, you may want not to put it off that far.
You wanna do this?
Right, then what we have to do is continue.
Tuesday between Columbia and the election, yes.
Yes.
Make it easier, sixty days, then if you needed another thirty, you'd come to us.
That's right.
Might make it easier.
So what if we went to, say, the middle of April, which is the fourteenth?
What I said, I'll try to do fast, start tomorrow.
That, that's, that's sort of a seventy-five-ish.
Do it right.
Kind of day.
Don't worry about your, your bets.
And at that point, we, we can continue it again if it looks like you just need a couple more weeks or something. So why don't we have a motion to continue this hearing to Tuesday, April fourteenth, at seven ten PM?
So.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Okay, is there anybody from the public? I'm sorry, I didn't ask here to speak on this. Okay. You have, your questions are answered?
Hmm.
All right. All those in favor of continuing the hearing to April fourteenth at seven ten PM?
Aye.
Aye, okay, yes, thank you. Thanks for coming out in this normal weather. We'll see you in the sunshine in April.
But if, if there are members of the public who wanna be heard?
I just asked.
Will you do that?
Yep.
He's into it, he's into it.
Yep. Yes.
May I ask one question, your office, the government?
Okay, terrific, thank you. All right. We're actually on time. So next on our agenda are event applications. The first one is a one-day liquor license for the Cohasset Dramatic Club for February sixth and seventh. And Lisa Pratt, I believe, is here. Would you like to come up?
Hello. Hi Lisa. Lisa Pratt, fifty-one Highland Avenue, your neighbor in Snowdome.
Yeah, exactly. Can you just surprise us of the whole situation?
I brought a visual. So this would be the second time that the Cohasset Dramatic Club has come before the Board of Selectmen to ask for two one-day liquor licenses for this Friday, February sixth, and Saturday, February seventh, to serve wine at a, at an evening theater event, which is set up cabaret style. Basically, people pay for one ticket price and to those adults that are there, that we serve, we serve snacks and desserts to the tables as well as sparkling water and water and cider and also wine. And it's a festival of ten-minute plays, so there are seven ten-minute plays over an hour and a half period with a fifteen-minute intermission. We will only be serving between seven fifteen and seven thirty when the play begin, when all the plays begin and an intermission for fifteen minutes. So it's a, it's this very short sort of time span and as soon as intermission is over, everything is put away. So, and we do not leave any bottles on the table. People, adults walk around and are serving tables from craft. So it's not, there's no open liquor sitting there for people to take.
I remember right, Lisa, this was a, quite a success last year, wasn't it?
It was. It was really, we thought, we tried it for the first time and we thought that no one would have any interest and it was great. It was, it was very successful and we've already sold a whole lot of tickets for this weekend too, so we're excited.
So there's, there's, you're basically with the ticket, if you wanna, little splash, you're getting a splash of wine as opposed to setting up a bar.
That's basically, it's, there's a fifteen, yeah, and so, and there's like only four people serving this room of all these tables. So it's not like, and you're serving, we're serving in little six-ounce plastic, clear plastic glasses, cups. So it's a, it's a really well-managed process that went well last year and we'll even be, we're sort of even more on top of it 'cause now we know exactly, you know, what we want to accomplish and to do.
Are you getting good audiences?
You know, we really are. It's, um, we, this, for some reason, this event, people, we've sold tables of ten and, yeah, yeah. And actually, four of the, there's seven plays and four of the playwrights are coming from the greater Boston area, so it's really fun that they're coming to be.
It's like the, the show that they have in Hingham.
The Hound of the Cabaret. But that's, that's a barnstormer.
No, no, but it's more extended, but you're having a little something before and then the same thing.
Oh, definitely. It has the same kind of table seating, exactly, that's right, Martha does. Definitely.
No, that's fine.
Just, one thing that we, I have to make clear on this, Lisa, is that, is that the town is also indemnified as the property unit. In the certificate, it doesn't show up anywhere.
Other than the town, but here.
Certificate holder.
Right.
We are the holder or we're insured?
It's an additionally insured and I think.
I just wanna make sure it's clear.
It needs, it needs to say they are, you want me to?
Additionally insured.
It needs to say that the town of Cohasset is the additional insured. I think Tracy or someone could give you the language that's usually used.
Yeah, it just, it's just.
We have to be listed as an additional insured. To be a holder of a license just means that you have this paper in hand. We need language in there that says that the town of Cohasset is an additional insured.
Under the same policy.
Okay, I believe there's a.
It's part of our town policy.
Right, there's a, there's a one-day liquor license policy and I believe the language is in there. And you can communicate that with the office. So what we'll do is we'll call for a motion to approve this two one-day liquor license.
Based on revise. So I'll get it revised tomorrow and then get it back here to the office to Tracy. So she has it on file, is that appropriate or against?
Yes, yep, that's fine.
So if, if everybody's in favor of hearing it.
Which is just a quick, you know, quick technicality, I'm just curious as to why we don't do this as a, we couldn't do this, is it two-day license or we have to do two one-day license?
I, I asked about that and I think it's, I think you have to have two one-days.
So our, our temporary liquor licenses are for one-days only?
Yeah.
Just curious.
The other thing is the, the new application reiterates that the, all the alcohol beverage must be from a licensed supplier. Yes, Jen told me that last year. She told me who to go to.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, we talked, we, I got that, I learned that. I didn't know that last year, but I learned that, yeah.
If somebody would like to make a motion, so we need to approve two, I'll just give you a second, two one-day liquor licenses subject to the additionally insured alteration to the insurance, yeah.
Yep, got it.
And also a waiver of the thirty-five dollar a day fee for the liquor license.
Mind if I just break the two of them up?
No, no problem, no.
Okay.
Breakaway.
It's not the town, it's us.
Also move your, uh, your.
I move, I move that we approve two one-day liquor licenses.
I, I moved.
I already moved.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I apologize.
That's all. He didn't.
He wanted to break it up, so we had two votes, so there was one.
Okay, all right, and we can do that. Yeah, I'll amend that.
Go ahead, go ahead and amend it.
You will, I will amend that to break it up with two votes.
So the first vote would be, if you want?
The first vote would be to approve two one-day liquor licenses for the Cohasset Dramatic Club contingent upon a properly filed certificate of liability insurance indemnifying the town.
You can second it 'cause it's a motion that you articulated. There we go. Got that, Tracy? All right, any conversations on the liquor licenses? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the second motion?
Move that the board waive the application fees in recognition of the applicant's status as a five oh one C three.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Passes you now, Lisa, have fun.
Thank you. I'll get the doc, I'll get the documents to Tracy then.
Thanks Lisa.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your time. Thank you so much.
Jumped the gun, I didn't even, I didn't even call you up. Whoa. Pussycat.
You've now awarded you a license, congratulations.
Was Deb behind you kicking it? Yeah.
I watched, excellent, definitely.
Okay, next up is a discussion on the Cohasset Youth Triathlon, which is, oh my goodness, I have to amend my agenda. It's Saturday, July eleventh.
So, so. So good evening, I'm Bill Burnett, representing, with me here is Deb Beal and also Christian Cuddy, my right-hand man behind me with Public Safety and Police.
Can I interrupt for two seconds?
Absolutely.
Can you just for the record, give each of your addresses?
So I live at eleven Linden Drive in Cohasset.
I live in Sitewin at sixty New Drifway.
Seventy-two Ripley Road.
Thank you.
It seems weird that it was a year ago that we came here and asked you guys for the first approval on this. And this was kind of, this all started one afternoon when I bumped into Bill and I, we passed each other, walking our dogs. And I've done the Cohasset Triathlon every year, the adult one, and I've worked in the school system now for eighteen years, teaching middle school phys ed, high school and middle school. And I said to Bill on that dog walk that afternoon, how, how can I get my students engaged in physical activity? And I said to Bill on that dog walk that afternoon, how, how can I get my students engaged in physical activity and personal wellness? Because it's something, it's a direction that we've gone to in the school system, as opposed to, you know, we still play the generic games like basketball, and kickball, and soccer, and stuff.
Dodgeball.
Dodgeball, um, but there is, there's a much larger fitness component to it now. And these kids, their parents are out there doing this triathlon, and they're getting excited about it, and I get excited about it, and I said, how can we mesh this together so that these kids can, can be participants in it when they reach the age? So, we, we didn't really talk much that afternoon about it, but it was on the burner, I guess, it was there. And then he approached me with, um, the kids' triathlon portion of it, which I thought was just awesome, and didn't quite know which direction we were going to go, but he had kind of sketched something out in his head, and we put it on paper, and we presented it to you guys, and, and kicked it off last year, and it was an amazing event. How many kids did we have total?
Oh, over two hundred or so.
I mean, kids were, were going into the pool every three seconds, and going down and back, and it, I know Diane, you were there. Um, we had adults in the transition area, you know, tying shoes, buckling helmets, changing T-shirts, and then the kids took off, and it was a very, very well-received event, I think. Um, you know, we learned a few things, a few things that we could tweak here and there, um, but we're back again, looking for approval to do it again this July.
What are the ages of the?
It is.
So, we're, we're ages, uh, six, ages six is the youngest to, uh, fourteen is the oldest. So, uh, yeah, so perfect, that is perfect, I mean, that was a great, the spirit was amazing that day. Just a little bit more of the specifics, uh, you see in the last few, uh, pages of the application. Um, everyone signed off on it, from police to fire, um, uh, Diane from the, uh, Cohasset Swim Center. Um, we are, um, going to meet, um, Deb, Chris and I are going to meet with the, uh, school board on, on Wednesday, February twenty eighth, seventh?
Twenty-third, I think.
Six, whatever, so we, we do have one final vote from them, because as you know, the bike course does go on the, on the swim, on the, on the school,
school property. We, we don't anticipate any, any problems, but, uh, what we're asking for tonight is a vote, um.
Conditioning.
Con- thank you, Martha, yeah, conditioning that if, assuming that they, uh, say it's all good, that, uh, that you as a board approve also. Just a little bit on the, on what happens, uh, in, impact-wise to the community. Um, there will be a two-hour, uh, timeframe from eight-thirty to ten-thirty on Sawyer Road, where.
I thought it was, I thought it was earl-.
Sawyer Street.
Sawyer Street, I apologize.
I thought it was going to be earlier. Is that what you?
Eight-thirty to ten-thirty is our, is our plan, yeah.
Says eight-fifteen here.
Eight, eight-fifteen to ten-thirty.
Yeah, the swim is first, so they, it takes them, they have to swim before they can get on the bus, so.
That's right, so there will be that time whereby the police will then, they will have a detail at the intersection, uh, where the library is, and up by the intersection where three A is, um, whereby the, uh, 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 no vehicle traffic will be going through that, through that section. Now, please keep in mind, though, that all Fair Oaks residents will be able to come in and out of their neighborhood.
Yeah.
Uh, when they come out of Fair Oaks, they'll be able to make a right and go onto three A, so they're not at all blocked in at that point, they will be able to.
Right, well, that, yeah, I, I live on Fair Oaks Lane, but.
Yes.
Um, just to disclose that, but, um, I think it is they, uh, they can, they can't take a left, Fair Oaks Lane, that.
Thank you, that's.
I'm just wondering, you, you send a, a flyer to the people on Sawyer, I wonder maybe if you could send a flyer to the ones on Fair Oaks, it might be appreciated by them to
We can do that.
to know that they're not going to be able to.
You're absolutely right, we only, so.
So they're not surprised, and.
I'm hap- I'm happy it's, it's in our list, no problem. We did do Sawyer, that's exactly right. We told all the, all the residents on Sawyer, but we can do Fair Oaks at the same time, too.
There was one other question, I had a call this morning from someone who lives on, on Sawyer, and last year she couldn't get out, and she had to go, she was going to Connecticut to a sick person.
Yeah.
A member of her family, and she had to wait an hour. Is there possible to, uh, a lane, lane or something?
Yeah.
So, she could get out, please?
Do you want to take that, everything? So, uh, last year we created.
Excuse me, Christian, do you mind if you just come up, only because it's just, people at home can see.
Um, last year we created a emergency lane in the middle, it was a ten-foot lane, um, checked by Chief Sylvia, so we could get the fire trucks through if need be.
Yeah, okay.
Because that's their main route to get to Sunrise or the Golden Living Center.
Yeah.
So, we did have that emergency route, and we did have, the ambulance had, they, they did have to use that. Um, so if it was an emergency circumstance, we had police, uh, details all along that, we had five or six, so if there was an emergency and someone had to get out, we could send them through that lane.
Yeah, well, she.
But they would have to, they would have to notify someone.
She waited, I guess. Was, was that information included in the notification that you sent out? Because if people were unaware of that, then they would not know that they could get out, only that the road was closed.
It can be.
I, I think it.
It can be, it was, yeah.
I think it, I think it should be, because I, I know last year there was another person who, um, I don't think it was an emergency, but by God, they needed to get out, and, and if there was enough of a break and a wave, that they were, you know, a, a, a police officer was able to direct them into the, the center lane.
So, there was plenty of room, on, on the course itself, there was room in between, uh, the kids.
Can you, um, explain just a little bit about what some of the anticipated changes are from last year, if any? Just in terms of the route, or the, the pacing, or?
So, so, from, there's no change to the route, but for everyone, for you all, and for the, for the public, it's, uh, they're swimming a certain number of lengths in the pool. Uh, they finish, depending on their age, they finish their lengths, whatever they're supposed to do, and then they walk down the steps of the swim center. They then, uh, take their bicycle, and then they go off onto, um, onto Sawyer, and then they make a right up. Uh, and then they go up around the s- back of the schools, they come back down to what we call the transition area, to the parking lot. They drop their bike off, and then they do a run. Um, it's going up towards Fair Oaks, but you don't go up to the Fair Oaks intersections before the Fair Oaks intersection, come back down.
So, run.
So, it's a swim, bike, and the run. But specifically to your, to your question, any changes are really going to be at the, at the venue itself. Um, it's a whole new look now, right? We have the seniors standing there, a new parking lot, um, we're working on plans of how that whole, how that in-out, when athletes go out of the parking lot, and how they go in the parking lot, that's all going to be changed. Um, with more specific channels on how they come in and out of the parking lot.
I, I don't remember where people parked, the participants.
They're all at the Music Circus.
At the Music Circus.
And that's been approved, that's all good.
And, and they've, they've approved it.
They've all approved, yes, yeah, we're very lucky with that.
Yeah, there's one thing I just want to remind, I gave you a copy of the.
Oh, yeah.
Train schedule, because now we have weekend train.
So, we will have a train that's going to come by through this two-hour period.
Yeah.
And, and, and assuming that the train will still continue on than the summer plans.
Yeah.
Um.
Oh, yes.
Which apparently will.
It will.
It will, right, so, we're already, I mean, uh, loo- look, I mean, these are, these are kids, but they're competitive, but they're going to stop. So, we're going to stop them right at the tracks.
We also have police officers on both sides, one at the Music Circus, and one at the entrance to the, uh, senior center.
Yeah.
That's right. That's right, so it's okay to stop, we're going to stop the event, and they will, and everyone will know that the event will stop. Yeah.
Karen, do you have a question?
Um, oh, I just wanted to know that from the original application that you sent in to this application, the amount of participants has gone from three hundred and fifty to four hundred, which is really quite a significant increase in the participation, which is great that that many people would be, children, uh, would be interested in participating in it, but, um, it is a large a large event.
So, well, so, and that, yeah, I was, I'm looking for a buffer, um, because my plan is to give money, uh, a, a substantial amount from the income of the event to the swim center.
Doesn't look very significant to me.
Um, if you take, they're being charged thirty-five dollars per athlete.
That was four hundred.
So, times four hundred. You think about.
That's the sum we get for one, then.
That's the way we get for one, right, we had two hundred last year.
I mean, we had two hundred last year.
Um, we have.
Yeah, I think a thousand.
Fire, we have detail, we have porta-johns, we have food, we have pay the kids, uh.
Pay the swim kids. But it says there that the, that that, that donation will include paying the children.
That's right, yeah.
Paying the staff, I meant, I'm sorry.
Uh, shirt, uh, athlete giveaways, so, um, there, uh, this is all on our, I mean, frankly, it's all on our own goodwill, so, there's not, there's not, there's not a lot of profit in that, so,
It is on our own goodwill.
We're just, I, I want everything, frankly, this is for the kids, for our community, and this for the swim center.
Okay, um, any other questions? Uh, just one thing, just so you know, um, um, and Bill knows this, um, from coming for the try, um, we, we're in the process of revising and, and kind of designing a new process for event applications, just to address different community questions and thing, questions that the board has had over the years, and we're not a hundred percent ready to roll out the, the new application, the new specific process, although we're trying to ease people into that. And one component of that is, is, um, going to be basically four large-scale events, and we have to consider this a large-scale event, because it's, it's, it's closing down a road, and it's a, it's an athletic thing, that's going to need details, and, um, potential, you know, ambulance or medical or whatever. Um, what we're, we're asking is, um, you know, everybody to meet after we've conditionally approved an, an event, um, with public safety, or anybody that's going to be impacted. So, just assuming you'd be willing to, once we, um, i- if we make an approval to, this evening, just revise and sit down again with, with Chief Quigley and, and Chief Sylvia, and any other relev- relevant people in town, to just say, you know what, Bill, hey, listen, you know, I think I got a better idea for this particular road closing timing, or, or that kind of thing, and just to, to let the, the, the town leadership, the people that are working on the, on the ground, kind of finesse this a little bit to meet the, the public safety needs of the town. So, assuming.
A hundred percent, absolutely.
And I know we do that.
Just as a quick example from last year, we were able to, even though we had posted the road closure time, we were, Bill was with, um, Chief Quigley, and I was with the, one of the sergeants who was running the event, we were able to actually, um, shave off some of that time and close the roads later.
Mm.
Um, as we knew, okay, the kids are coming out of the pool, now let's close the road, so it's not like, um, they're going to be closed at a certain time. It, it'll fall in the, in people's favor, uh, where the roads will probably be closed a little bit, a little bit shorter than that time, because we can really take a look at, okay, how many kids are on the road, and how many kids are left in the pool, so.
And, and just, um, to reiterate something we said a few minutes ago, it, it really is important, and probably the most important thing anybody can do in town, in this town that wants to do anything through this town, is just be as, um, communicative as possible. So, include as much information as possible in the letters, reach out to as many people as you can, um, I know it's, it's cumbersome, but it really makes a huge difference in, in terms of, um.
Well, it's a good point, and, 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 uh, you mentioned that we should go to Fair Oaks, and pass notices out on the residents there, too, so.
And I would also encourage you to do that well in advance of the event.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, I think once we get approval from the school, and then.
Probably may, yep, once you know it's happening.
You guys can put a package together.
We want to let you know, kind of thing.
I mean, we're, we're here to do this for the kids, and.
Yep.
You know, and, and for goodwill, like we said, but safety is our number one priority.
Right.
Yeah.
Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Is there anybody who'd like to move?
I'll move that we, uh, approve the application for the Cohasset Youth Triathlon, as presented to us this evening, with the, under the condition that the school board approves, uh, the application as well.
I'd like to amend that.
Okay.
To include the chair's recommendation that they meet again with the public safety officers.
I'll second that emotion.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll redo that.
Yeah, you can.
Okay, so we have a motion, um, we have an. I'm going to.
Proposed amendment.
We have a proposed amendment, so let's vote on the, the amendment in the second, um, so, um, all those in favor of the amendment to the motion? Please say five of us, say a aye.
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 Aye, okay, that passes unanimously, so now we have, um, the original motion plus the amendment, um, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, guys, so, the school committee, it is two twenty-five.
Two twenty-five, thanks, so.
It'll be the end of the month.
All right.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Nice to see you. Boy, we have, people, I don't even have to invite people up tonight.
That's right.
Everybody's.
And I'll, and I'll make it brief, we continued it to next Monday.
Absolutely.
Have a good night.
I read, I read your email.
Do you have a snow date?
It's getting, a snow date.
You do realize.
Yeah, there's a storm.
There's another possibility.
I, I lived in Maine one winter, it seemed like a thousand, um, and we had over a hundred and eighty inches of snow.
Yeah.
So, you know, yeah, it's New England, it happens. But hopefully it won't happen Monday, um, if you have any questions about things that, that are going to end up being looked at, there are a few, so. Whatever, whatever works for you guys.
Yeah, yeah, give us some information.
Um, I got approached some time ago by the trustees of the reservation to do some trail maintenance and improvements on Turkey Hill. Um, they haven't finished their application yet, uh, one thing we're going to have to work on on that one is part of the trails are in Hingham, and I want to see how much it, of that is, uh, if Hingham CPC has been approached to do that part. Um, nothing against Hingham, but I think we'll find people will find it objectionable for us to take their tax money and spend it. Plus, you can, CPC has had a history of towns purchasing land or doing projects jointly, in the case of, like, say, Wampe-Tuck, where, you know, goes through a couple towns, uh, but they're putting their paperwork together. Um, Jenny, uh, the Housing Authority has a few things they want to do, they're still working on it, some that involve some fencing and, uh, some improvements to stairs. Um, we have Glenn Pratt for the Dennis Reardon, uh, ma- memorial, which, if you were driving on Brook Street and didn't see the stop sign for the snowdrift, you'd run into, um, it's going to, right now, it's in dire need of a retaining wall, the hill is sliding down into it. So, they, uh, I just got some plans from, uh, Glenn this afternoon, I haven't had a chance to look at them that well, but he's going to, uh, put in a retaining wall on the bench, and just spruce the, uh, the place up a, a, a bit. Um, the Reardens, uh, I, I understand are within sight of that, Dennis was killed, uh, in Vietnam. Um, what else do we have?
Flag, the flag, that's right.
The flag, yeah, the bicentennial flag, um, which we voted on last time, but we weren't going to bring anything to special, so that one's going to be pretty much boom. Uh, we had voted to back what Glenn wanted to do. Glenn also wanted to, um, do a, some signage for, um, uh, Gaylord Levy, who was a Civil War, um, Medal of Honor winner, who was from Cohasset all around there gravely, but is buried here, uh, so he made up for whatever time he wasn't here since then.
If you gave him a long-term rhythm.
Yes.
And Mr. Levy was in the Revolutionary War?
Not Civil War, yeah, Medal of Honor didn't come out until Civil.
Interesting.
Yeah, I had a, a relative of my grandmother, who's so far removed, um, there's probably not a drop of blood in me that won, uh, the medal in, uh, the Battle of the Wilderness, uh, and, uh, I went online one time, the website they have for the Medal of Honor didn't have a picture of him, and I sent it to him. And, uh, they posted it, attributed me as a direct descendant, which my mother was always mortified, so I'm going to find out and arrest me, but that hasn't happened yet. Uh, and that's really the only ones I've heard of, um, that it will be, will be bearing any fruit. Um, we got our figures, I, I think I sent all the figures out.
Yes, you did.
Uh, one of the things, and actually, um, Paul, I want to talk with Lou, we have to put aside ten percent. Um, CPC hasn't really been that active in doing some affordable housing, and I'd like to put twenty percent into the affordable housing. Uh, the ten percent will bring us up into the two hundred and sixty thousand range, uh, that other, uh, ten would bring us into the three hundred range, and then we can start actively looking at, uh, some projects, uh, there's been talk of doing a, uh, affordable housing for veterans. Uh, Hingham did something similar to that, the Hershey House just recently. Um, but, uh, other than that, you know, that's about it, we, uh, we've tried through, two times to meet, uh.
Well, third, third time's a charm, as you said, right?
It, well, it depends, third on a match, you're not lucky.
That's true. I can't remember the schedule, do you remember the, the schedule? What is the deadline for, for applications?
Uh, we haven't really set one, you know, the meeting is going to be part of our annual meeting. It being postponed isn't going to, going to, uh, really affect us, I don't think. Most people, I've already got, I've already told them, you know, get the, uh, get your proposal in on an E form and send it at the end as soon as you can, so we can all take a look and go in and ask intelligent questions.
Yeah, we have a, we have a, a deadline.
March seventeenth.
Of March seventeenth for, for articles.
Yeah.
Or just so that we make sure that, and I, I, I would assume CPC is gonna be done, right?
Oh, yeah, I would think we're done. If not, we'll sneak one in at the last minute.
Yeah, maybe. All right, terrific. Thank you, Ross, and we'll, we'll get a, a more specific update maybe next week.
Yeah, you have yourself a.
Um, okay. Um, so just on that, we have, um, uh, Chris probably has a better sense, but just some of the anticipated articles. Um, one of the ones that will come through a committee is, um, the Historical Commission is gonna be looking for town meeting to create a Cohasset two hundred and fiftieth, um, and I, I looked up the language of what it's called, but I can't remember.
Commemorative coin?
Yeah, commemorative coin, so the two hundred and fiftieth, um, anniversary year celebration. Um, and that will probably be, um, an article that we'll discuss putting on.
I actually have a, a trade that was, I bought that is memorial for the two hundred and fifty, the two hundred and twenty-five that we.
So the town did celebrate the two twenty-five?
Well, no, two, yeah, there's seventy years still, fifty years.
Okay, so two hundred?
Yeah, and, and they had out effects which people could buy.
So that's gonna, that's an article.
And that'll defray some of the costs, that was the idea of doing that.
Terrific. Um, so we'll have, that, that was something we'll probably schedule relatively soon. May or may not be a zoning article, um, w- we know already that there are gonna be some alternative energy, um, articles which are, um, in process of being looked at, reviewed. As of now, I, I believe there's one citizen's petition, which is, um, something that we entertained last year. It was about expanding some sewer, um, lines out on King Street, I believe, out near Lily Pond. Um, but that's, we'll, we'll get all these queued up obviously as soon as we can and as soon as those flesh out. But again, the, um, deadline for citizen's petitions is Tuesday, um, February seventeenth. So, and then obviously there's a lot of movement in the different departments. I think next week at our meeting, we'll be discussing the FY sixteen budget and some of the, the articles that might result from that or, or not, um, but that will be for another meeting. That's, that's all I know about at this point. Okay, so next, um, in our, I'm, I'm gonna flashback to the summer when we talked a lot about, um, really trying to, um, focus on our committee structure and, um, it's, it's not easy with all the other work that gets going on and the committees go off and start doing their work wonderfully. Um, but one of the things, um, I wanted to do was there's, there's a few smaller committees or liaison roles that happen in town that we typically don't, um, make a priority of getting an update on. So I asked Ralph Dormitzer to be here tonight. He's, um, community representative to the Massachusetts Port Authority's Community Advisory Committee. So come on up, Ralph, um, and obviously introduce yourself for the record, but also, I just, you know, we just wanted to see what you're up to and what it's all about and what we need to know. And if there's anything we can do to help.
It sounds, it sounds so nefarious.
Yeah.
Uh, first off, I wanna thank you for, uh, eliminating the planes.
Well, that's nice of you to say. I'm Ralph Dormitzer.
Did he do that all by himself?
Thank you for getting rid of the planes.
Yeah, I was on the committee, he was on the committee.
I'm Ralph Dormitzer, I'm one of eleven at Land Cabbie, and I'm a beneficiary of that too, so you know that in fact it was in all our interests. Let me tell you exactly what the committee is and how long it's been in existence, and then we'll tell you, tell you what's happening, okay? Now, the Community Advisory Committee is now morphing. It's a Community Advisory Committee consisting of about thirty members of towns around Logan, basically, who have gotten together and are there for the purposes of actually getting the FAA and Massport to pay attention to noise. Fundamentally, that's what it's all about. It has been partially successful, it was very successful back in probably the late seventies and early eighties, when in fact, we in fact were disadvantaged by not belonging. What happened at that time is the planes which departed basically southwest, which used to go up basi- basically the Napontet River, were then transferred and they took a sharp left turn is when they left the airport, runway two-two, two twenty degrees. They made it back over Cohasset. The departures on nine, the departures on two-two, still come this way. Arrivals on three-three, three hundred and thirty degrees, also come over Cohasset. So an awful lot of planes come over Cohasset. What we were able to do after a lawsuit for which the town paid seventy-eight thousand dollars, seventy-eight thousand five hundred dollars.
But who's counting?
Right, and which we actually were not successful in, but were successful in getting the FAA and the judge to agree there should be mitigation as a result of the lawsuit and the result of the fact that the Massport was going to put in a new runway. As a result of that, we were granted eight million dollars. And that eight million dollars was used for two consultants who actually resulted in taking these flights, moving farther out over the ocean and dispersing them more across all the territories, so that Situets get some, Cohasset get some, Holly get some. We are morphing as a committee into what is now known as the Massport or Massachusetts Port Authority Community Advisory Committee. And what is that? And what is it, how does it differ? The legislature in its wisdom decided that in fact it should be a more formal committee. Prior to this, it was just a five oh one C three corporation with individuals, that's all it was. Now it's gonna be a formal committee, part of the Massport Advisory Board. We get a board seat on the Massport Board and we get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to pursue whatever noise objectives we in fact decide are important to the communities. That's a huge change, that's a, that's a real formality now change that's going on. And you've approved me at this point as the representative. I'd be perfectly happy after fifteen years of this to begin to turn this over, to be perfectly honest to you, with you, to somebody else. But nevertheless, at this point, I'm the, I'm the representative of Cohasset, so that's what that is.
Excuse me for one second, the two hundred and fifty, that's coming from Massport?
Massport, Massport.
And, and the board seat, is it the, uh, is your, uh, participation in that confined just to noise issues? Like can you get involved, do you have a full board seat there or?
It's, it's a full board seat and the distinction between what we were before and what we are now is it's the Massachusetts Port Authority. The Massachusetts Port Authority in- includes, um, the port of, of Boston. So in fact, we would have concerns about the port of Boston, uh, finances of Massport, expansion of Massport of all kinds. So it's really a very important position, extremely important, one of nine, okay? So that's, it, it's a huge change, it's an enormous change, gives us real significance.
And that seat is, is held by this consular chair?
It is held by one, it will be held by one individual, will be nominated for the purposes of being that person.
From all these communities.
Yeah, well, it's not quite so clear as that. The legislature decided that they would pick that person from Boston, and there are seven districts within Boston. So it'll be picked from among the districts in Boston. And we may end up trying to change that because there may be other communities that really ought to be recognized. At times, we don't have to have it always from Boston, lots of other communities are really seriously affected, ourselves, Milton.
Right.
Hull, for example, and Lockton.
Sure, Glenn likes that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it should really be spread out a bit, but we'll see.
Yep.
And, uh, I really appreciate it because, uh, way, when I first came here, I realized, and even when I've been traveling overseas, that they circle over my house on the hill. And I could look down and see my house start coming in, so.
Below your house, right.
It was a great deal of traffic. Why not a rotating seat?
Well, in fact, it's up to the legislature to do that, okay? So, um, we will have some bylaws, we're actually gonna set ourselves up on Thursday of this week, as long as we can get in, and talk about the bylaws. We probably in the bylaws will put that in, um, but the rotation will still have to stay within the city of Austin in some way. We'd have to go back to the legislature to get the actual bill amended. That is not so hard to do, um, we can do that, I think we'll get a lot of talk about doing that, so.
And how many people are on the advisory committee?
Um, this new one?
Yes.
Um, thirty, but it also includes now Concord, Bedford, and Lexington, which never were on it before, because they're worried about Hanscom and Hanscom doesn't wanna see any more traffic there, so it's a really broad committee, yeah.
Is Hanscom currently under Massport?
No.
Okay.
The other one under Massport is Worcester, and, and for a long time we hoped that Worcester in fact would be.
It was so close to that board.
Yeah. I'm, I'm gonna show you a, uh, and give a copy of some radar tracks, because if you wanna know what the future looks like and what my problems are, I'll show you, I'll give you these radar tracks, this is one for everybody. And we'll describe what's happened and what I think is the problem ongoing here, okay? And what we'll be working on.
Just answer me one thing. Should we just be renaming ourselves Winthorpe South?
No, not with Ralph at the helm.
Well, Winth- Winthorpe is among the Chelsea, Winthorpe, and Somerville are just, just incredibly hurt by the noise. Okay, so what is this diagram all about? This is a set of departures in one morning about two months ago. These are actual tracks that were done by, um, Massport showing exactly where the planes were going. The departures were on route, are on a runway two-two, which is two twenty degrees, and they're basically southwest. But when they leave the airport, they take a left, go out Hull-Gut, and you can see where they're going, uh, what that Point Allerton, if you can see it there where it's yellow and green. And they come back and they're supposed to come back where you see the concentration of flights, basically at Minnet Beach and Situate. So what we were able to do at one point here with what are called RNAV routes, is to actually get the planes routed so that they in fact, when they left two-two, ended up here. When they leave nine, they do the same route, but they come right over Cohasset. When they leave four, going north and come back around, they go over Hull. So that's, that was the distribution. What's the problem? Well, you'll see that about half of the flights are nicely concentrated, uh, using flight management systems and waypoints, and they all go over Minnet Beach and Situate, just nice. However, take a look at all the other ones.
Except if you live on Minnet Beach.
Look at the distribution, the greens, the blues, the, the other reds. What has gone wrong is that even though these planes are supposed to be running on a set of waypoints or tracks, they are not. They in fact are doing exactly what they used to do many years ago, which is just randomly sending them over Cohasset, or sending them over Situate, sending them over Hull. So what we had gained with that eight million dollars has not been realized because what's going on is the controllers are not specifically agreeing to do the routes, that's what's going on.
Well, the other thing I'm noticing here is that the, uh, the variances are all taking place at lower altitudes.
Right.
That's correct.
Yeah, so you have a higher noise impact.
That's right.
Absolutely correct. So what I did is, and the reason this exists is that I wrote Massport and, and detailed the fact that these things were totally going wrong and said, I want you to sh- give me the radar tracks. And when we get through with the radar tracks, I want us to go to FAA and I wanna know why in fact, what we have agreed to, what the, what the Superior Court required them to do and what the FAA agreed to do is now not being agreed to. Anyway, what is our next task? There has got to be enforcement of what we agreed to, and there's no enforcement and no mechanism. Controllers are measured on safety and efficiency, they're not measured on whether or not these tracks are followed. So what's happening is all of those great achievements, which was to get the planes higher and scattered, is not happening now. So there's a, there's a huge issue here. The second thing is that we have agreed with Massport and the FAA, there will be a compliance group created. So the compliance group is, we have to figure out what we're going to do in fact to make sure that what we agreed to is actually agreed to. And then there are a whole slew of other things beyond that that we would do, but at least right now, just getting them to do what they're supposed to do.
These, these ro- routes that are directed by the, by the controller, or are they requested by the pilot?
Well, the answer is, it's not clear who's actually doing it in this part of the investigation. Every, a- as you can see, when they go out Hull-Gut, see how concentrated they are, the yellows here?
Mm-hmm.
They are definitely using the flight management systems and they are definitely using RNAV and they're definitely going by virtue of the waypoints, they are definitely doing that. At some point, either the controller or the pilot is saying, well, I'd like to cut this short, I'd like to do something else. And they're being, they're agreeing to do it. I might be, uh, being a pilot, I might shed some light on it.
In a sec, yeah.
The, uh.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I would just wanna let him finish or, and then you can come up if you want.
So, from my point of view, the, the big problem with this whole thing is that the controllers are only measured on efficiency and on safety. They're not measured on whether or not these routes are followed. And therefore, there's no, there's no obligation as they see it. And, and to understand how the whole controller system works is the, the tower initially gives the, the go-ahead for a plane to leave the runway. It's the control of the aircraft is then transferred to controllers up in Merrimack, New Hampshire, who are looking at radar tracks. And then when they get to something around twelve to fourteen thousand feet, is transferred to another site in, in Nashua, New Hampshire, who then take over. So we don't know in fact which set of controllers, whether it's the Merrimack ones or the Nashua and the Hampshire ones that are taking over and doing it. Our, our feeling is it may well be that when the transfer is made between Merrimack and Nashua, the handoff is done. Because we, the, the handoff instructions are really quite vague in our view. Uh, it may well be that that's when it's occurring, but we just can't tell right now. But this has gone to the FAA, they are investigating this whole thing. But this is a, this is just a sample of what it looks like and why things are going wrong now.
Jack, do you wanna come up?
Just a, uh, Jack Creighton, twenty-three Cushing Road, just a point of information. The, um, the aircraft are under the control of the air traffic control system, the tower, which does pass it off. The pilot has to do exactly what they're told unless there's an emergency, in which case the pilot can deviate. They have to ask permission, but the pilot's first safety is to make sure if the aircraft is bound. But to what Ralph is talking about, there is controls, they are told exactly what altitude to fly, what heading to fly. They don't have any, um, so it's right back to the controllers.
Yep.
Yeah, it is better.
Now, uh, this is of flights taking off from Logan and his panel.
Yeah, it's, it's runway two-two, it's two hundred and twenty degrees, so they're flying two twenty degrees, so, so it's slightly southwest and then making that left turn in, in Cohasset, in, uh, Boston, yeah.
Now, uh, are there any issues flights coming into Logan?
The ones that really bother people here are the ones on three-three, three, three hundred and thirty degrees. That's the ones you hear coming down, three A going over, basically over the transfer station, over Hingham and then over Hull. Those are the ones that scream coming in, okay? Huge issue there. Two things about that is when we did, we did also agree that there would be a shortcut route that they could take that would not take them the way they're going now, just coming down, down the shore line, swinging in over Cohasset and then turning up, that's what they do. We have a short, a short route that looks like the reverse of this route that goes by Hull-Gut. They can do that one as well. They do that one at night, so it's far less noisy if you do that, cause you're not flying over the community, so you're over the water all the time.
Have you got any copies of the old maps? I did have them for a while, I think it'd be nice to compare what you agreed to.
Oh, well, that'd be very nice. Someday I will reproduce them for you, if you wanna call me back.
If you want us to maybe support you on something.
I'd be, maybe I'll just send them to you so you can see. I'll try to get ones that are clearer, so what's really happening. With regard to the three-three arrivals, what's wrong with that? For the most part, the planes are not terribly noisy, particularly, believe it or not, the European ones are not terribly noisy. It's the problem with the A three twenty plane, the Airbus three twenty, which is operated principally by JetBlue, okay? The problem with the A three twenty is it screams on the way in, and the reason it screams on the way in is they've got a ventilator on their fuel system that is actually, it's like a whistle. So the darn thing is creating this enormous noise simply by whistling. Lufthansa has, has begun to change all their planes, but they don't have many here. JetBlue hasn't done any of them. Very few coming into Heathrow anymore are allowed to do that anymore. They're forcing them to actually change the, this, this vortex thing that creates a, creates a, a, a vortex in front of that whistling piece. But anyway, A three twenties are just terrible. The only other thing that we could do short term that would work is that instead of, um, coming in on three-three, what they do is they come in, descend, come in, descend, so they level fly, descend, level fly, descend, level fly, descend, until they get to Hull and they actually descend completely. Many other airports have got what's called continuous descent, where they just glide down the glide path. At that point, you're not making anywhere near as much noise. But right now, they make noise cause they're going level fly, so.
So they don't glide down like others?
They don't do it till they get to about, and, and a hull fifteen hundred feet or so, thousand feet, then they're, they're, they're going down this three degree nice glide slope at that point. They could do the glide slope all the way back to Norwell.
I know, because I've been on them now that I think of it, sure. I watch, I'm looking for houses.
Exactly, they go level flight and down, level flight, and just noise, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
What, uh, what, what is the committee's, um, what steps would they take after the investigation, after the FAA investigation?
Well, it, it's a compliance, um, group that's agreed, that FAA and Massport have agreed to, and will have a subset of the CAC that will actually be part of the compliance group. The purpose of that is obviously to see how to get, to get compliance, so there will be a compliance group, yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ralph, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for, uh, advocating on our behalf and, and then coming here and updating us on.
One question actually, before you leave. Um, yeah, you, you've made the point, uh, that you've been on this committee for a long period of time. Looking over the landscape, has anyone indicated that they had an interest in, in carrying on?
Well, twisting Marty means.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
I'm to do this, uh, and hopefully Marty would, would at least begin.
I didn't ask you to name names. Make that clear.
Enjoy, enjoy, enjoy me, right.
All right, thanks, Ralph.
Thanks, Ralph.
Have a good night.
Thanks for having me.
Okay. Um, next up is a, um, an appointment to the Conservation Commission, um, moving an associate member to a full member to fill the vacancy left by David Frog. Um, he resigned, I believe, effective around December first. Um, so I will invite up manager.
Yes.
Um, this is an appointment made by the town manager, the town manager is not here this evening. I would like very much to have the opportunity to understand the thought process, um, behind this appointment. Therefore, I request that we postpone this appointment until the town manager can be in attendance.
It's a, it's a board of selectmen appointment, per the Town Manager Act.
Oh, it got changed?
It was always that way, and there was, well, uh, what happened was, it wasn't, it wasn't specified in the original Town Manager Act. And then, um, there was a question, so we reserved it to state law. State law, um, says that it is in, in the case of, um, a, a town that has a town manager and a board of selectmen. It would be, um, the town manager unless design, you know, unless designated, else.
Wh- what is the law?
The law is our Town Manager Act, which puts the, um, puts the appointment.
It did go back?
I just confirmed that.
Yeah, Kevin's, Kevin's got a rule from that.
Yeah, I have a copy.
So the board has not discussed this?
I, I, I have not.
And there are two applicants.
And I have, as liaison, find that this is, I, this is news to me.
For the...
I would think the chair would have discussed and asked me, we go through the system of the liaison plus the chair, so I think, I, I...
So, I, you know, I reached out, there are two associate members, there's one, um...
No, but you shouldn't, I should have, uh, this was news.
Could the chair finish?
Well, you know, I asked the chairman to discuss it with his associate members and to come in and, and make a report to us.
Yeah, but you, you shouldn't, it should have, you should have informed me, and I'm supposed to give the information to you.
You're a liaison, you're not a come-in.
As a liaison, and you're not supposed to take it over unless I, after you've, uh, oh, had conversed with me.
Okay, could I?
And, because I'm very concerned about this whole thing, very concerned.
Could I just invite the chair of the Conservation Commission to come up and just explain, um, the thought process? I, I, my understanding is he's reached out to his members and, um...
Well, I have also a comment from a member also.
Okay. If you could identify yourself.
Uh, yeah, Jack Creighton, twenty-three Cushing Road, I'm chairman of the Cohasset Conservation Commission.
Well, I, 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 I am concerned, because I have the minutes of the July first meeting when we did the voting. Um, and, uh, we, uh, the first person was Mr. Henry, which we did not. Uh, and the motion failed. And he stated afterwards, if the vote comes down to him or Mr. Pempera, we would have deferred to Mr. Pempera, because he believes the commission needs an engineer. The next vote was a motion by Selectman Quigley, second by Selectman Gama, to appoint Justin Pempari, and the vote was unanimous, five oh. The next vote is motion by Selectman Gama to approach, to appoint Patrice Vogelmann one year, second by Selectman McCarthy, and the vote was three-two positively. And, uh, I, I believe, I have been the liaison for two and a half years to the board, and I, I was sorry that, uh, that, uh, that David resigned, because I like a board that's, that's particularly the CONCOM, that has people that are, uh, have ex, expertise in that field, and then citizens. And I agree with Mr., with Dr. Henry that we need an engineer, and Mr. Pempari is an engineer with, the government engineer. And, uh, since there's a five oh vote, it, it should actually be just Pempera. And I called a member of the board, and he told me that he had heard from the chair that it was the other way around, that we voted five oh for Patrice Vogelmann and not for Justin Pempera.
So, just, just...
So I'm concerned with, with this whole selection process. It suddenly is on the agenda, I have not informed, I didn't talk to the chairman, and to suddenly have it on here, I think it's not in process.
So my, just from my point of view, um, there was a vacancy, um, and my goal is to try to get the positions filled as, as quickly as we can. So I reached out to the chair of the Conservation Commission and said, please discuss it with your associate members and, and, and see if, um, you know, bring it before the board. My understanding is that, Jack, and you can speak to this better than I can, um, that he had spoke, reached out to both of his associate members, um, and wanted to come to the board and recommend, um, Patrice Vogelmann to the full position, so.
That's correct.
If I can turn it over to you.
First of all, I want to say very clearly that, um, Conservation Commission, the commissioners and the associates have been working very hard. We're, we're facing town, um, really unprecedented development challenges. We're really wrestling with issues of the fifty and the hundred foot buffer, there's some major projects that are being proposed and have been proposed within the fifty feet and a hundred feet of wetlands and coastal banks. And the conservation's mandate from the town, as expressed through the Cohasset Wetlands, um, bylaw, um, it's been very difficult and it's very crucial. And I think the commissioners, I'm very proud that the commissioners, um, have worked hard, and particularly the associates. We are very blessed, we have an abundance of, of riches, we have, um, Justin or Jay Pempari, um, and we have Patricia Vogelmann, who have worked very hard. And have been excellent, excellent associates, and as we know, the purpose of the associate position is so people can be accustomed to, um, how enforcement works in practice. To, uh, there's a lot of regulatory judgment, um, engineering, we, we hire that basically. And they've both done very well, they've, um, um, Patrice actually put together a very good study that, that she presented to the commissioners about what exactly the fifty and hundred foot, and we're looking for some precedent, we've reached out to the legal department. This is some very serious business, and the Conservation Commission is handling it in a very serious manner. As far as, um, the movement from the associate to the commissioners, I spoke openly and frankly with both of the associates. We do know that we have an opening coming up, one of the commissioners is not going to be, he's going to be, uh, not, his term will be up, there will be an opening coming in the spring. And I spoke with both the associates, and the decision was made in conjunction with me and the associates that, um, Patrice would, we would recommend that Patrice be appointed, um, at this vacancy, and that Jay would be appointed in the spring. And I say this, um, after having spoken specifically with Jay, and I will tell you, um, Jay and I have become probably friends, I would guess, I hope he would say that. And he, I said, Jay, I don't want to put words in your mouth in this meeting, and I asked him whether it would be all right if I could indicate to the Board of Selectmen whether that was his decision, because he had early pointed out to me, there will be no controversy. Conservation Commission and these things have had quite enough controversy, Conservation Commission and the town needs to focus on the duties of the Conservation Commission. And Jay very clearly said to me that they can't appoint me if I don't put my name forward. And he's confirmed that with an email, so, um, and I think this is a case where the Conservation Commissioners, and particularly two very, very excellent. We are blessed, this town is fortunate to have associate commissioners of the caliber, who have put a lot more work in than I've, than I've seen. So when you ask, why is it that I recommended that, I recommended that because the associates asked me to do that. Thank you.
Jack, just a quick question, um, is, is there an, um, an engineer on the board currently? No.
No.
Okay, so it's just, it's just a skill set probably that we should...
Engineering.
Well, Jay is the engineer.
Well, Jay.
Well, Jay is a, um, engineering and the environmental, um, for instance, uh, somebody could be an engineer who, they might be operating the power plant in a, uh...
Sure, but just in terms of that, that particular skill set, Jay does have that, and it's...
Jay does have that.
And it's probably...
And Jay does work for the EPA.
Right.
And, and we have...
And it's probably something we should look at recruiting some more for some open positions.
That's why, uh... As far as the commission is concerned, both Jay and Patrice are going to, assuming that board of selectmen, um, in your wisdom, they're both going to be on, they're both active in there. Patrice has a very strong regulatory background, she does regulatory work for Verizon, which is probably the most challenging regulatory environment. It is very important that we understand that the Conservation Commission is to a very large extent a regulatory body. We are, we are administrating and enforcing regulations that have been made by the state and the town. So the ability to apply, you could almost look at the engineering aspect of regulation. So she brings a skill set, uh, we have some fine attorneys, um, and it's, it's actually working, you know, very well. And we would really like to be able to focus on our job of protecting a town of Cohasset and our environment, um, more so, and, and we have done that, and we'd like to be able to continue.
Madam Chair, I am appalled at this, I should have been discussed, I should have brought the nominee here. And to have this, uh, system abrogated, is not in a process by the book, in process of the, of, of this, uh, town, uh, how we, uh, uh, vote on people on the board. And I, there was no excuse, there's no excuse for this.
Well, I'll, I'll take the blame for that, I mean, this is how...
Well, you should have, I, I go to all the meetings, I rarely miss one, I know how they're working, and I feel we direly need the engineer who knows. He, he, he is so good at that meeting, he and your husband, uh, represent the most knowledgeable people on that committee. And it, I, I think to, uh, to do this kind of thing is an outrage to the town.
I, I have to ask, are you, are you angry because you weren't consulted first? Or are you angry because it's not your selection? I'm not quite sure I understand which, because as a liaison...
Yeah, no.
Oh, give me a little attitude there.
Now, wait a minute.
Fair enough, as a liaison, we, we are a conduit, nothing more.
We're both...
That is an independent body, it is not our body, no, 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 I'm getting angry, and, and listen to us.
No, he...
I know, but I'm happy with you, I, I...
I, I...
I, I would like the floor, and that's it.
Martha, let him finish. Put the floor for thirty seconds, but keep it going.
Thank you. We have no authority to make selections, except as a board. We have no authority to bring someone forward or to anoint someone. You are an audience member at their meetings, not a participant, you don't have a vote.
And I, I, you are totally miscasting what I'm saying.
I may, I may not be, but I have two ears, and I know what I'm hearing.
Yes, you are. When, uh, the chairman works with the liaison, saying, we have to get an appointment for here, I said, fine, uh, tell me who you want to do, fine. And I will bring it to the board, not the other way around, I should know, that's all, period.
Your, our, our position as a liaison is not to bring anything, except information.
I'm not saying, but it is.
Excuse me, so... And, and I, I was, I knew there was an opening, I wanted to get it, Jack reached out that he, that Patrice was interested, that he had talked to Jay, and... So I'm sorry that I didn't consult you, I wish you had, you know, when you got the agenda, at least talk to me about this, because we might have been able...
Well, I did, I called you Friday, and you never called me back, I left a message.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't get a message, Martha, I'm sorry.
Well, I left it on the phone.
Well, it didn't, didn't record.
Friday evening.
There is not, just as a point of information...
I was very surprised, if you just simply said, uh, we're going to do this call, right?
May I, may I finish, please?
That's all we need, yes, that's all.
Jack, let her finish, okay, thank you.
Well, she interrupted me.
I'm just gonna give you five seconds, and then I'm gonna call for a motion.
I just, as a point of... Okay, just a point of information, um, I've been on the Conservation Commission for quite a while, and there's never been a, to my knowledge, a formal thing where the liaison is supposed to do this. I, this is the first time I've heard of it, Martha.
Well, I haven't had this situation since, uh, there hasn't been a, uh, we had just the one, the three candidates, so we didn't have this situation. It's just communication, that's the problem, communication.
Karen, I'll let you, and I just, I just want to keep it civil, because, you know, we have somebody here that's serving this community, um, very well, and this is a very uncomfortable conversation. If you have an issue with process, with me as the chairman, I, I, you know, I'll take it, we can discuss it. But I want to keep this as, as focused on doing the right thing and advancing the ball as possible.
The, the chair of the Conservation Commission makes the point that there's been a lot of controversy surrounding the Conservation Commission. And, um, I would have looked at this, uh, as an opportunity for the Board of Selectmen to continue what I looked at as a very positive step in appointing, um, Jason, or Jay Pempari.
Justin.
Justin, thank you, um, to the commission, a positive step in restoring, um, integrity and public confidence, which there are very many people in this community that lost confidence in the Conservation Commission several years ago. To, this is a missed opportunity to continue that, to not put forward an individual who not only brings a specific capability that is lacking and very much needed on the, the commission, uh, but also who works for the EPA, who has the credentials, um, in, in favor of what many would view as a political appointment. Because again, as I say, is, is a missed opportunity.
That I just, just, I want to close, and I want to...
Yeah, I, Diane, I, I would just like to say that in, in these things, it, we can avoid these situations if the board is kept informed of what is going on, if the other board members understand what is going on, and, or, we can avoid having these conversations in front of somebody who is out there to be, to be appointed, if the board has an opportunity to talk about it ahead of time.
Fair enough, thank you very much. Um, I, I, you know, I think that the Conservation Commission, um, you know, controversy is over three and a half years old. And, um, I was as disappointed in that night as anybody, but that was two thousand and eleven. And I think that, um, for better or for worse, um, the Conservation Commission has stayed the course and is, you know, doing the best they can with the, the talent and the citizens that are in town, you know, um, I, I wish some of the people that, you know, went off might consider going back on. Um, I think it's a, it's important, uh, for us to keep moving forward. I reached out because there was an, an opening on a committee, as, as I do occasionally, should we, you know, should we bring somebody in? I was told by the chair that Justin wasn't putting his name forward, that there was one associate who they would like to move up, and I, I, I trust that that is, is the case. And I scheduled the appointment, because there's a lot, as to Jack's point, there is a lot of work to be done, and I think they would be, um, well-served by another voting member, whoever it is. So I would like to call for a motion.
Thank you.
If anybody wants to make a motion?
Yeah, um, I'm, I, uh, move that we accept the recommendation of the chairman of the, um, Conservation Commission to point Patrice Vogelmann full member. And I have a, actually, go ahead.
And this would be to fill the remainder of David Frog's term, which is through June two thousand and fifteen, so it's just a couple months.
Frog's term. No, I believe, I believe that David's continued, I, well, I, I, I'm not...
Whatever it is, Tracy, we'll make sure...
To fill the remainder of David Frog's term, right, thank you.
It is.
Yeah, that term, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay. I'm going abstaining because of the process, that's the only reason.
Staying. Thank you, so we have three, yeas, a no, and an abstention, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So Chris is obviously not here, uh, for a town manager update, um, he will be back next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, Board of Selectmen meeting will be focused, as I mentioned earlier, primarily on, um, budget. We have a, um, we have a hearing, I believe, Tracy?
Yes.
A posted hearing.
First one.
What about the handbook?
For a hash, for a class...
Oh, the handbook, I'm sorry. Thank you. You're reading the agenda, I checked it on. Uh, we do have a hearing for, for a class-two license that's been advertised for seven-ten on the tenth of February. Ten, okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, Carol St. Pierre, um, and Chris and Beth have been working on the committee handbook. And, um, Carol gave us, um, an updated... And, um, Carol gave us, um, an updated draft. This is really sort of in her, uh, wheelhouse to complete for our eventual approval. Um, so, um, what we looked at and reviewed this weekend looks on initial glance to be fa- somewhat similar to what she handed us or what she left for us this evening. Um, we're not gonna take any votes, but I would like to ask for any input that any of you have on what we received in our packets over the weekend. Um, I think it's great.
Yeah, I read it over. I thought it was good and, you know, it's not gonna be perfect going out of the gate, just having.
Yep. One, one.
Well, I think, I think come at the appointing authority, um.
Where's, what page, Martha?
Uh, on nineteen. That the, that the, the, the boards that we have keeping update of concern, the minutes sometimes of some committees are hardly existent.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that this is, they should report regularly, regularly to the liaison. That was what I was bringing up. And the plans, so we can keep the board updated.
Review its minutes?
Yeah, yeah. I think that's important. I mean, we.
Like work, to add something like work with the, um, board or committee chair on timing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because if there's something specific that a committee is doing that needs, uh, the, uh, board needs to know or they need information from me, I mean, even with, uh, there hasn't been anything like, I'll take the example of the CONCON, 'cause they're doing all those, uh, committees, it's a regulatory board, so you don't have that kind of except that you're keeping track of it, whereas some others.
Tracy does their minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
Paul, if I, if I can, since you're here.
Yeah.
Ask for your input, uh, as, as also as a selectman, um, on liaison relationships, just in general.
Yeah.
Um, you know, are they typically, as described in here?
It says review minutes. I know, review minutes. I've got that.
Um. It says review minutes, but do, 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 do selectmen usually get involved in kind of, you know, poking
Review minutes, yeah.
Yeah.
a lackadaisical chairman who hasn't published minutes, or is that?
Yeah, sometimes. See, what I've seen about liaisons in other communities is they make of the job as what they
Yeah. Correct.
want to. It's, it's, it's various. Some do hardly anything at all.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
Some are very active.
Yep.
Hmm.
And if you have a committee that's not not performing or having attendance problems and so on, it's the liaison really that can serve as the catalyst to get that committee moving again.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And bring it back to the board and suggest changes or whatever. Yes, yeah.
Through the board, through the town manager or something, yeah. As opposed to working directly with the committee? Because I would think that that would, that, that could cause a few little issues in that, you know, some, some selectmen might be more proactive about attending their liaison meetings and paying attention. So ultimately, the oversight should be here, as opposed to within the,
That's right.
within the, uh, liaison role.
Yes, the oversight, if it's a board or selectmen committee, the oversight's here.
Yep. Okay.
But as I understood the presentation that you made to us, that the oversight truly is with the town manager. You made a presentation to us one evening?
Well, yes, sort of a general responsibility to make sure everything's coordinated and working is with the town manager.
Okay.
But you all adopted a liaison system. Many towns don't have a liaison system.
Mm-hmm.
The philosophy of not having one is that all five of you are liaison with all committees.
Mm.
If you have liaison, then you have given people a portfolio to, to provide a, a communication conduit. And the communication conduit should work both ways.
Hmm, mm-hmm.
Not just to go to the committee and report back as to what they're doing, but also to talk to the board. And if the board has something that they want the committee to do, to bring it back to the committee. So it's, it's a, um, it's like a diplomat, where we appoint an ambassador to, to France.
Hmm.
You've got someone who's gonna deal with the committee, but also be reporting back to the board.
Would it, would it make sense for the board, uh, this is something we talked about, I think, early on, probably in your tenure, when we were assigning liaison roles? Um, it is, you know, really, what is the, how, how do we define that, you know, uh, you know, what I would recommend at this point is maybe we queue that conversation up for another meeting, where we, we actually talk about what are all of our individual expectations? And how would we like to see that, that system work or that relationship work, you know? If, if there is a committee that's not, not, not meeting, not doing minutes, not, you know, where, where, how do we do, how do we perform the oversight? Or are we really just the, reach out to the chair, you know, what can I do to help you back on track? Or, or, you know, do we turn it over to the town manager and say, you need to start poking thi- this beast, or whatever? I, I think maybe that's a, a bigger conversation for us to have. What, what are our expectations and, and ideas about making that relationship work?
I would say this is a pretty good description.
Yep.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Of what, of what the role is traditionally in mo- in most communities.
Okay, yeah. Uh, well, I, I think that this came into existence a long, long time ago before you were on the scene,
Diana?
because we had legal voting voters that, uh, uh, and we were liaisons to different boards. So then the Board of Selectmen decided, meant to, to adopt this kind of thing, 'cause we didn't have it before.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, some towns don't have that, because there are some departments that everybody wants to be the liaison with.
Mm-hmm. Hmm.
And then you found competition among members as to who's gonna have what position and and there was a sense that maybe all members should be equal liaison with some of the big organizations, big committees, the important committees.
Hmm, hmm.
So there's been a divergence of opinion in Massachusetts.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
The liaison is the older system. The, and it, and it works. It does work, particularly if you have a committee that's, that is, uh, heading in the wrong direction.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes if you have a selectman who's saying that the committee's heading in the wrong direction, before they drive off a cliff
Right.
incur liability or expense for the town, you've got somebody who can, can say, hey, wait a second, and bring it back to, to you all and to the town manager.
Okay, paying attention.
Right, right.
You could try and fix it all.
Rejiggering charges.
I think most of our committees that I know of, at least the ones I'm involved with, are right on. They're very well organized. They stick and, uh, uh, some have us, or said something, I've, and I brought it to the board. But most of them, they're, they're just very well run. We, we, we have very good boards.
In good shape. Karen?
Um, yeah, I, I just a, a couple of small things, 'cause I, I would like more opportunity to, to review this. Um, but in the, in the beginning, under purpose, where it says the handbook is perceived to be prepared by the Board of Selectmen and the town clerk, I, I really think that this has been prepared by the town clerk for the Board of Selectmen, and I don't think we should take credit for it.
Town clerk, right. Yep.
You've put a lot of hard work into this.
Is the purpose?
Yeah, yeah.
So, could I, no, just, um, I, that's a great suggestion. One of the, just in terms of, um, in the, uh, specific text changes or grammatical changes or, uh, language changes, maybe, um, if everybody could send, after they've had a chance to read it, and again, that we're, we're talking probably a couple months before we're gonna, well, I would like to finalize this by the end of, um,
It would be nice to have it.
March, for the, um, for the, uh, health and rec fair.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, if you have specific changes, um, it would be great to send them maybe to Tracy. Could you be the keeper of, of some of our just edits?
No.
And then maybe pass those on to Carol?
Sure.
And she can, and then, so the next draft that we talk about will incorporate anything we've, have asked.
One, one thing I would like to discuss, because town council is here, is under the use of town council. Um, now I, um, page twelve.
It isn't the old one, not the new one.
Yeah, I'm, I have not had a chance to look at the old one, so I'm only working off the old one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Um, it, it sort of hints at it here, that there would be, that there's a process. And I, I'm wondering if there isn't a way, or if Paul perhaps uses a process with some other towns that we might, um, plagiarize or adopt, uh, for our own, where there might be a, um, you know, a, a, I wanna say a paper trail, but that's so archaic these days, but some kind of a form, electronic form that is filled out, that goes to Chris. Chris, Chris then approves, approves that. And then it's, it's sent on to Paul, who approves it for his attorney, his or her, uh, oh, no, his attorney. Um, perhaps also indicating whether it is a retainer or a, uh, billable request? I think that that would be important for us to know, and might set up a, um, a good process. Is that some?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we, we have a system that we use called Request for Legal Services. And it's a cheetah paper. And somebody who needs legal services fills out the sheet, gives it to the town manager. Town manager either says yes or no.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
If no, usually the town manager will indicate, go call Department of Revenue, that's, uh, uh, or call the State Ethics Commission, or whatever. If yes, then it would come to me. And one of the things that I would do would be to indicate right up front that it's covered by a retainer or not, so that we can have that discussion. Not have any surprises one way or the other. Then with that, I'll also indicate which attorney is going to be handling it.
Hmm.
Will be the contact person. So then I send that back to the town. So the town has a record of when it was asked for and what was asked. Uh,
Yeah, it's all right.
The problem with those forms is they usually morph, because someone's, uh, asked a question, we do an answer. And then, when the answer's not liked, then it was, well, what I really meant to ask was, and then they keep asking questions
Right.
for, over the next six months until I finally get to yes. So.
It's like a kid. Beat one of you down. I wonder too if that, that just heading should be Use of Legal Services? Because there's town council as in poll directions, and then there's town council as in just overall, general council services. Um, a couple of other quick, you know, things. Um, one of the things, and, and I, I don't know, I tried to think of another word, but on page four, it discusses advisory committees. Well, we have a capital A, capital C advisory committee. So, this kind of lowercase a, lowercase c advisory committee as a generic, you know, we want to create a committee to run with the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary or whatever it is. I, I just wonder if there's, if that's clear enough, if anybody has any, like, could come up with a better term?
Well, I think we, we, I mean, for clarification, you could just not to be confused with the capital A advisory committee. Because they are advisory, that's the rule that they specify.
Right. Right, right. I, I didn't come up with another word, um.
There's, there were a couple of things, just tense wise, like under orientations, as, um, committee members should be re sworn, no, committee members shall be.
Be sworn or must be or. Can, can those kind of textual things sent to Tracy?
Yep. Yep.
Um, my concern tonight is just any kind of big picture, um, changes. Oh, I, I wanna get some clarification on the recusal process. Well, town council, capital T, capital C is here. Um, so just some practical, um, advice on the recusal process. Um, so technically, a formal recusal is necessary if, um, there's some direct leg, direct financial gain in a matter. And you would recuse yourself, then you would, you would have to leave the room. Um, if you have sort of a tangential, um, relationship, for example, you're, you're at a hearing board, and it's your best friend's neighborhood, there's no material interest to you personally, and you're on the hearing board. Um, but you don't want the appearance of, you know, um, what's the word? I'm looking for.
Inpropriety.
Of any kind of conflict or impropriety. So, you're gonna not sit on that board for that conversation or deliberation, just to make sure everything's clean. Can you sit in the audience? Can you ask questions as a citizen? You know, what's, where do you really have to recuse yourself, and what does that actually mean? 'Cause this says you have to leave the room.
The hypothetical you posed is one that could be cured by disclosure.
Okay.
Because if you disclose under twenty-three B three, then you're immune from any consequence.
Okay.
That assumes there's no financial interest.
Twenty-three.
B three.
B.
B three, assumes that there is no financial interest.
Of two sixty. Yeah, two sixty-eight A, chapter two sixty-eight A, section twenty-three B three.
How do you know this stuff?
Read it.
Come something wrong?
Because you have to read it every day, pretty much. Somebody's asking a question.
Sure, your job, yeah.
But if, you can always, any board member at any time can always decline to participate for any reason. They may not be feeling well, they may have emotional involvement with the issue, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
They don't need to explain why they're recusing themselves. But if they are going to recuse themselves, then they should take themselves out of the loop.
Okay.
Hmm.
If a person has a conflict and can't participate, because they have a financial interest, they are not prohibited a- as the person with the financial interest to protect their own financial interest.
Hmm.
They still have a right under the First Amendment to speak, but not as a board member, but as a public.
Okay.
As the public. So let's say the issue is, uh, to grant a variance to a property, and you're the next door neighbor, and you feel your property's gonna be severely damaged. Well, not only are you required to recuse yourself, you don't give up the right to protect your own property.
Okay.
So you can be in the audience and speak for yourself.
Okay.
It's not the wisest thing to do, but you have that right to do. Better if you send your, a relative or power where.
Yeah, suppose there's somebody else that can represent you, yeah.
Yeah, but you don't, you don't lose the right to speak for your own personal interest.
Okay.
You do lose the right to speak for someone else.
Okay.
So, let's say someone, you recused yourself, and someone says to you, can you go to that meeting and speak on my behalf?
Since meeting. It's to your board, oh, alright.
Yeah, to your board, no, absolutely, perfectly.
Okay, okay, alright. Great, thank you. Okay. Peter, did you have a question?
Uh, I think it's been answered, thank you.
Diane, I don't know if you consider this big picture or not, but under the, um, the introductory sentence there for the code of core values, um, this is, um, what page? Uh, I'm sorry, eighteen, top of page eighteen, the Board of Selectmen hereby adopts of those core, core values. Um, and will ask, become comfortable with, I, I, I want them to abide by them. I want them to fashion that, like, I want them to be comfortable with them.
Yeah, it's interesting, 'cause when those were adopted, we were gonna have our committees sign off on them.
Yeah. Well, the only committee that did is advisory, and, and we, we did ask that the town.
Yes. Hmm. A plus.
I br- I brought the, I dug out the, the two forms, and, um, this one, I don't know whether it's a final form or not, but, um, my notation on it was that the committees would adopt it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that advisory was the only one that did.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so we can expand upon that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's right.
Okay, good. Mm-hmm.
Good point. Okay, and anything else on this tonight?
Will she be made to become comfortable with the meeting?
No, so, yeah, I'll, I'll.
No, no. Do you have another word that?
I would just end it as adopted this code of conduct, period.
And will ask it all, um, you know, boards and committees, I mean, we, one of the things we kind of debated about was whether we're gonna make sure they all signed it, or leave it up to them, and, um, so let's, we can talk about this.
Mm-hmm. Well, this.
But if you just, if you just leave it at, the Board of Selectmen has adopted it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
It's just de rigueur. Everybody should be this way.
So we ended after discourse. I'll suggest, make the edit suggestion. Anything else?
Okay.
Okay, the only other thing, just on the list of boards and committees that, um, you know, I'll suggest to Carol, if, it, it, it just may not be, it just might be too cumbersome on this chart, but, um, just some kind of reference to. uh, just some kind of reference to, um, the charges for each of these committees, you know, where they might be. 'Cause ultimately, the, the appendix A will be the, the charges for each, each of these committees, whether the charges, I mean, sometimes it's, it goes right to the appointing authority, sometimes it doesn't.
Well, because I know a lot of people, uh, go on committees and suddenly, you know, uh, we'll congratulate them, sometimes they say, and I really don't know what, I, I know what my ideas are, but I don't know what-
No. We're gonna change all this.
The statutory ones are, are either state-
Or, yep.
Or town law.
Yeah, those are all right.
But that's an important difference, it was one of the suggestions I was gonna make. Statutory suggests that there's a statute, which is in the book of statutes.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah.
Half of these are not statutory in that sense, they are bylaw.
They're bylaw, right. Some of them are both.
And some of them are both.
Right, so we just need to clarify that as well. Type, but you know, just in terms of rebuilding, um, the Open Space and Recreation Committee, um, it says here it's advisory, um, but you know, where does the charge come from? Um, because I, it was my-
Well, this, this was a conversation that we tried to have-
Yeah.
Last meeting with Chris, is that, you know, I, I guess, I, I guess it needs to be clarified, but historically the understanding has been that the, the charge of the Open Space Committee
Is the plan.
is to create the open space plan, and then to oversee its implementation.
Right. And where does that charge come from?
A state.
State law.
I don't know whether it's a law, I, is this, is this one?
Right. So, right, that's just the kind of-
Is it the E, EEOC or E, EEOE?
Details are one of those. I wanna try to get, for open space and recreation, with the, the plans.
Oh, there's a, a, uh, the state requires communities to develop an open space plan in order to be eligible for grants.
Right.
It's, it's not a statute that requires it, it's a-
But it's-
Grant eligibility right here.
But it's under E, EEOE?
Oh, it's MIPs.
One of those.
I don't remember.
No, it's not MIPs.
The reg, the regional planning agencies years ago were involved with developing this, 'cause I wasn't involved in it.
Yes.
The-
So we'll flesh this out a little further.
Does this have all the committees, what, what about Economic Development Committee, for example?
We haven't read some of them.
Yeah, that's not on here, and there was another one, uh, the, um, that's in the bylaws, um, that's not on here.
I didn't have a chance to look at these.
So we'll, yeah, we'll, you know, before we get to the final approved version, we'll make sure that we're, we've covered everything, whether it's bylaw or-
Well, there's the bylaw committee.
Well, one of the bylaw committees, it's not here, it's like the Government Island Committee. That's the one I was thinking of, yeah.
Government, Governor Island, yeah.
That's in the bylaws, Government Island, and it's, it's not here.
Yeah.
So we'll flush that out with Carol.
You know, before we do the final, we think on this, it would be appropriate to send whatever draft we have to the committee chairs for any comment period, you know, for two weeks to send us any comments, or they may have some thoughts of, you know, they're gonna be thinking of-
We can probably, once it's a little more fleshed out, we can probably put it online and, and let them know if they wanna, you know, weigh in,
Right.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Just give them a chance to, give them maybe some experience up there.
But- Yeah, but the next step will be really important to get the participation of the committee chairs, which would be to come up with the appendix that literally defines or gives the mission statement for each of the, each of the committees, um, and, and kind of takes that chart we were just looking at to the, to the next step.
Um, it, it, it wouldn't be the chairs that would be doing that.
Yeah.
It would be the Board of Selectmen for, for the committees we appoint. And whether it's state or, or bylaw, that is what would dictate the ones that are-
That's true.
So, no, it isn't the, the, the committees do not get to say, this is what we'd like to do.
Yep. Yeah, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just suggesting that they be involved in, in our kind of practical-
I'd like a chocolate for dinner.
Right, right, I mean, a lot of these committees, especially, you know, are working on old charges or, you know, so-
Or no charges.
Or no charges, and, and a lot of them are still functional and, and doing great work, so it would be-
I think every, they, they may have some poor charges, but I don't believe there are any that have no charges.
Does the Economic Development Committee, does it have a charge?
Yes, it did. Yeah, it's horrible, but it, but it was a charge.
Actually-
So is that no charge, it's a horrible charge?
Well, and actually, the, the, the Economic Development Committee went off and did its own thing. They did not do what it was charged to do.
Did they?
Yeah.
So, uh-
In my view, that would be no charge.
Well, no, it would be-
And that is a conversation that we'll have at a, at a, as soon as we can have a meeting, 'cause I, they have done, there is a lot of work that they did produce, whether they were focused on their two thousand and nine charge or not, I don't know, but they've been pretty much dormant since two thousand and one, so we need to kickstart them, 'cause that's important.
Diane, there's an error, error with the committee, it's O P E V.
I got that, thank you, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Caught that, yes, all right. Okay, um, so we're not going into executive session, uh, 'cause Chris is not here. Um, is there any last minute comments from the board, any public? Okay, I'll call for a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Oh, a second, yes.
Please, please, people, just wanna hang with an open motion to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're adjourned, thank you.